Everybody all set?
Are you connected to the web?
I am.
Do you have? And just a reminder for board members that that popped up comment time. If there's anything we need to talk about, that has recently happened.
Oh, so we can do that? Okay. I thought we, I was about to wait until.
Well, if it's something like you want to comment on the national situation.
Thanks.
Yeah.
I'm going to go ahead and call to order the Tuesday, July 5th, 2022 regular meeting of the Ferguson Township Board of Supervisors. First, I'm going to hand it over to Acting Manager Dave Modricker, and he's going to let us all know how we can participate in this hybrid meeting format.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to members of the board, staff, and public for joining us this evening for the July 5th regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors. This meeting has been properly advertised in accordance with the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act as a hybrid meeting with the option to attend online using the Zoom telemeeting platform, and the main meeting room has been made available for members of the public to attend in person. If you're joining the Board of Supervisors' regular meeting this evening as a member of the public or as an agent to speak on behalf of an agenda item, please say your name, municipality of residence, and the topic you wish to speak on when the chairwoman calls you. Prior to beginning the meeting, I have a few short procedural items to cover. First, members of the public are asked to remain muted during the meeting to prevent any ambient noise from disrupting the meeting. If a member of the public is acknowledged by the chair, they may unmute their microphone for their question or comment. Secondly, board members are asked to indicate their name when motioning or seconding a motion so that the minutes may accurately reflect the action taken. Finally, a roll call of the Board of Supervisors will now be taken to ensure that all members can hear and interact using the Zoom meeting platform. So please indicate that you are here when your name is called. Ms. Caldwell?
Here.
Ms. Dennehy?
Here.
Ms. Stevens?
Here.
Ms. Strickland?
Here.
Ms. Williams?
Present.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
All right. Before we go to citizens' input, we are going to, I'm going to ask for a motion to add an item to our consent agenda tonight. That item is a Greens landscape contract, and that would be added under new business consent agenda. It would be item 1H. So I'm going to make that motion, and I would ask for a second. Any questions can be directed to Dave Modricker.
This is Patty, our second.
Thank you. Any questions?
Just to clarify, it is a contract pay request.
Thank you so much.
Yes.
For those words. Very good. All right. Everyone clear on that item? All right. Very good. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, and motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. And we'll go on now to citizens' input. If anyone in either the room or the virtual room would care to comment on anything that is not on the agenda, they're welcome to do so at this time. I believe I'm seeing none.
I'm, I'm happy to say something if there is no other.
Okay. Any other? Okay. Looks like the floor is yours.
I, I just need to take this moment to recognize that the irony is not really lost on me, that while seven months ago we celebrated the rightfully historic moment of electing an all-women Board of Supervisors and went on to hire our first female and black township manager, and yet today we sit here with one of the most fundamental rights of bodily autonomy and necessary medical care stripped away from people on a federal level with no real promise or guarantee that Pennsylvania will be able to protect us on a statewide level. I hope that our legislators from local and municipal to statewide and national will continue to fight for reproductive rights for all, and I look forward to being able to provide more action steps and resources in the future. Thank you.
Thank you so much completely. And Tiara? Yes?
Yes. I'd like to take this time, thank you for your comments, Hillary. I'd like to take this time to acknowledge that nationally, our country is still at a very depressing state when it comes to the black community and the police, and I'd like to acknowledge Jalen Walker in Ohio who was shot 60 times unarmed after a traffic chase or something of that sort. I've seen a lot of things, but I just want to say, you know, I believe in, in people being responsible for themselves and following the law, but I don't believe that the police officers should be jury judge and executioner. And so we see this so many times, and it's just, it's really heartbreaking. Each one of these murders affect me, affect me in a different way, but I do just want to acknowledge that and acknowledge that there's a lot of work to be done, not just in our nation but locally, and I just, I just wanted to put that out there and acknowledge that, and hopefully you all can look into Ohio, and they are raising money for the family and helping them out, but yeah, I just wanted to say his name, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
All right. Anyone else? Okay. We'll go ahead and then move on to approval of the minutes. I would entertain a motion to approve our June 21st, 2022 regular meeting minutes.
So moved. This is Patty.
Okay.
So seconded, this is Hillary.
Fantastic. Any corrections or comments? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Okay. And we have moved on to our authorities, boards, and commissions reports. Tonight, we have John Spoholski with the Center Area Transportation Authority, or CADA, report. Welcome, John.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just, just a comment. I want to confirm with, with James, are we recording?
I'm sorry. What was the comment?
Oh, we're just checking a tech, whoops. We're just checking, checking a technical detail.
Recording in progress.
That's, yep.
And do I have audio?
You definitely do.
Is, is?
Yep. We've got thumbs up.
Maybe we pull it down a little.
Oh, yeah.
Is this piece of equipment functioning?
That's better. Yep. Thank you.
As it should.
Excellent. Thanks.
Thank you. Well, good evening. Thank you very much for allotting time in your busy schedule to have updates on events at CADA. And of course, as is now the practice under Centris' leadership, we now have written reports. That used to be something that was not requested of your representative on the CADA board, but now it is. So I believe you all have copies of it, hopefully. If not, and there was a disruption in delivery, please let me know, and we'll correct any infirmity in the supply chain that there might be. And I assume you've all perhaps had a chance to look over the contents of that memorandum. There is one thing in particular I think that's certainly of importance to Ferguson Township, and that's why with me here this evening, I'm not here alone from CADA, Derek Sherman is here. I'd like to introduce Derek, for those of you who might not have met him. He's the Assistant ADA, an On-Demand Operations Manager. So he is the expert on CADA Go and CADA Ride in terms of how it operates, and he also plays a role not only in the purely operating side but on the information, sales, and marketing sides. And so if we do have any questions or comments about that subject this evening, Derek is our expert here. So with that, given that officially I'm only supposed to have three minutes at this podium, remember that was, I was ordered that. So I'm happy to oblige whatever your pleasure might be. So perhaps it would be well to, to focus on that proposed service change that involves certain areas within Ferguson Township. And before we do that, though, and I'm sure Derek is going to emphasize this, there will be a further step in this particular subject or on this particular subject in the form of a public hearing, and scheduled for Thursday, July 14th, 2022, between 5:00 and 6:00 p.m. right here in the Ferguson Township Municipal Building. And the objective of that meeting, of course, or hearing, is to obtain whatever additional information that members of the public might wish to offer concerning what CADA is proposing for service with particular emphasis on the areas that are identified in the announcement for the hearing. And I would like to, before I go further, thank Ferguson Township. This is on your website, so I appreciate the help of the township in advertising this public hearing so we can try to get as many members of the public as possible to express whatever their wishes might be and suggestions. That said, of course, the CADA board and the CADA management are, are always faced with the challenge of trying to balance needs and wants of the public as they might prefer transport service, public transportation service, at the same time trying to balance that with efficiency and the use of the available resources that the authority has to put service out to the public. And so sometimes, you know, there's not a perfect answer to that struggle, but we have to do it. That's the real world. With that, perhaps in the interest of the use of time, I could, I'll be pleased to hold open for questions, and to the extent that I might not have all the information, Derek would, I'm sure, be able to, to add to what you're seeking, and we can always go back and get the answers for you from other parties among the CADA staff if you wish. So with that, much your pleasure here.
Thank you so much, John. Lisa, any questions?
No, I don't have any. Thanks for your report.
Yep. Thank you also to the township for helping to get that information out, and thanks for being here. Any questions? Anybody? I don't, I don't think I have any questions.
Okay.
Is there, is there anything you would want us to know that's important for residents to consider, I guess? Just any, any thoughts on what would be important for us to consider in this upcoming?
One thought that I would offer would be regarding CADA Go, the most recent entry of what we might call demand responsive service in CADA's overall service portfolio.
Right. You think it might be more practical to think about relying on that?
It's, no, no, I've lived public transportation service not only as a CADA board member, but long ago I started to live it as an academic studying transportation, in all forms, by the way, which public passenger transportation was just one and one of somewhat particular interest. After all, you're looking at someone who, from the standpoint of age about this high, would be out, one who would ride a streetcar or a bus just for the fun of it. And then it got more, shall we say, intellectually deepened later, but, but it is in my blood. But now back to the serious points, if there is only one thing I would offer on this subject of CADA Go, it's an attempt to offer service that would reach out to members of the public who might, without any other alternative or an alternative such as fixed route service, be able and/or willing to use public transportation service. But it is a curbside pickup at a person's residence.
Sounds, sounds good.
And curbside delivery at whatever their destination might be.
Yeah.
That's the good side of it.
Right.
It does require advance notice, and I defer to Derek Sherman to tell you more about exactly how it works, even though I, I think I have a good feel for how it works. But anyhow, there are advantages to fixed route service. And if you're performing a home-to-work trip five days a week.
Right.
Or sometimes six days a week, like yours truly did when Penn State paid me to work there. They don't pay me to work there anymore, but I still do some volunteer things to them, and they save a lot of money. They don't pay me anything for it. But anyhow, that, pardon me, I didn't, that didn't sound right.
No, it's fine. It's fine.
But, but I think.
Penn State is a good force. They know how to get us all working for our cause.
But it's a different kind of a public transportation product. It does in some ways have overlays with CADA Ride, which historically CADA has offered ever since it became eligible for federal capital and operating assistance money. And, but there are some differences. But functionally, they're, they're very similar. You have to arrange for an in-advance pickup time, and there has to be some adherence to honoring what the service provider will do from the standpoint of being at the point where you're supposed to be picked up, when you're supposed to be there. And, and of course, at the other end of the trip, when you have a return journey, on the return portion of a round trip, you've got to try to accommodate the operator of the service in terms of the parameters that they have for operating efficient service.
Sure. That makes sense.
And there are other details I could go into, like shared ride versus single ride trips. That's another subject. We don't have to get into it here, but, but as with every subject, there are always various aspects of it that cause one to burrow more deeply.
Well, John, you've given us some things to think about, and I appreciate that. I really do.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Sounds like you're working on some good options for us, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right.
All right. And thanks again for the support with the public hearing.
Sure, sure, sure.
A good evening to all.
Good evening. Thank you. Okay. And we'll move on to our special reports. We actually have no special reports this evening, so we've gone right on to our COG Committee reports, and I'm first up with the Park and Recreation Governance Committee. Well, the, I did not provide a written report, and I apologize for that. We are continuing the same conversation that we have been talking about, which is really mainly focused on thinking about what we want the authority, the Center Region Park Reform Authority, to do in terms of both our regional parks and our municipal parks as two linked but separate systems. So just reviewing, that regional grouping would be like Millbrook Marsh, the three regional parks like Hess Field, Oak Hall, and Whitehall Road Regional Park. The two pools are included in those regional assets when we talk about regional authority tasks versus municipal authority tasks. This is kind of an important, I know it's sort of like I'm going over and retreading the same turf, but it's kind of an important, it's sort of really an important development in the conversation about how we think about parks, because one might really understand why the township as an entity that provides our capital investment budget and a lot of staff time and effort on our parks, not the regional parks, but our municipal parks, and where we spend a lot of time and where our residents spend a lot of time interacting with us, why we might have, and where we have also a Parks Committee, which other municipalities also do, that's a very different system, and we're, it might have very different needs than that regional park system where we all participate together to provide these regional assets. So I think the progress we made, sorry, it's kind of like long-winded, but the progress we made in this particular discussion, I think, was we started talking about whether it's the authority or the so-called agency that has purview over certain tasks. And why that's an interesting development is that there's a symmetry that's being assumed, sort of, between staff, staff and the agency and the authority, which are appointed officials, like we're elected. Yeah. So where the next step would be then to say, okay, so agency is staff, authority is one governance entity, the COG committee structure is actually the other governance entity. So the part that we sort of have to understand is that no one is necessarily saying that the agency shouldn't do something in terms of what it provides for the region. The question is, would they be interacting with the authority as their governance body, or would they be enacting with the COG committees as their governance body? So that's sort of like the thing we, it's kind of complicated. That's sort of the thing that we got to in our discussion this, this time. So just trying to bring everybody along with that. Any questions? Okay. All right. Moving on, sorry, I forgot my glasses tonight.
That's okay. It's CCMPO.
Thank you.
CCMPO, Lisa. No problem. So my report is in the packet. The only thing I was going to point out from that is that the, the grant that the township received for streetscape and safety improvements in Pine Grove Mills received an additional $15,000, I want to say, for preliminary engineering and design. So that was really exciting, because those are just, you know, always additional costs that get added to that, and it's.
That's great.
Yeah. So that was, that was great news.
Wonderful. Okay. And next up, Facilities Committee. Patty?
Oh, well, I haven't put together my report because the meeting was just this morning. See, the highlights from that would be the SIP and the program plan, they, they've sort of worked on that, and they really focused on the next five years. It's not to say that they're ignoring the years out, but the next five years, we have some big bumps in numbers in terms of budget and things like that, so they've been really focusing on that. Let's see, I'm trying to think of this from my memory. The other thing was the search for Lou Brumgarde's replacement. They've been working with hr.gov, and they don't call it Facilities Director anymore. It was recommended that, based on the job description, it's the Facilities Project Manager or something.
Okay.
So I think they have three applicants in. They're still keeping it open and doing a little more, but they are, so far, it by all means, it looks like qualified applicants, but I will review my notes and provide a written report in the next agenda.
Thank you, Patty. And Executive Committee, we again canceled General Forum, so we got, had the cancellation notice, so. Other committee reports, none. Staff reports, we have our manager, would you like, Acting Manager, would you like to highlight anything for us?
I have nothing to highlight. The written report is included along with the Public Work Director Report.
Okay. Any questions for Dave Modricker in either capacity? I have a quick question. It is something I could maybe email about, but I just liked the whole board to maybe hear the answer if you have one. So I just happened to notice that there are sometimes at businesses, when you pull in and out, kind of like a bump that you go over that's a cement curb-like thing, like at the YMCA, for example, they have one. And one thing it does is it really slows people down. It makes them stop. So it's almost like a modified speed bump, but it's at a place where they're supposed to be stopping, like a speed bump is like in traffic. So are these things ever used at a location, say, at a really busy corner where a convenience store goes in, to help people remember that that's a stop sign right there? Like used strategically? Or were they just residual accidents that occurred? It's a street sign question.
It's a good question, and I, I think the best answer is that the curbing that you're referring to, the concrete ribbon.
Yeah.
Was probably installed as a stormwater control as a very low-profile curb. So instead of the curb completely disappearing, you leave about an inch and a half or an inch, so that low-flow stormwater can still go past.
Interesting.
Sometimes if the driveway is coming down to the road, you may not see that, but it also, over the years, as design standards have changed, you may not see them as frequently as we have in the past. But predominantly, it's a low-profile curb for stormwater control.
Okay. And would you ever see one of those go in? If, like, would you ever suggest one for stormwater control these days?
Sure. I'll, I'll look at our township engineers here, nodding his head. So yes, it's still part of our standard.
When practical, whatever. Okay. Thanks so much for allowing me to explore that.
Sure. Yeah. The, it, it's interesting. It can slow people, as you mentioned, it's a bump.
Slows water, slows people.
Yeah. And sometimes you'll see speed bumps on private property because they don't necessarily meet the same standards as the township does when we install them on our roads, which we don't do very often. And there's a process for that, but I'll stop there.
Okay. Okay. Thank you so much.
Yes.
All right. Planning and zoning, no report. Any other questions? All right. Seeing none. We are on to unfinished business. First up is a public hearing on a resolution of the Township of Ferguson, Center County, Pennsylvania to support legislation that prohibits domestic violence offenders from holding state office. This is introduced by me, I guess, so we've discussed this before. Representative Conklin is introducing some, or has introduced some legislation and has requested that we consider voicing our support for that. We've had a couple conversations about it. This is the public hearing portion of this. So the first thing I'm going to be doing is opening it up to the public for comment, then I'll go to board members for any comment, and then I'll take a recommended motion. Uh, then I'll go to board members for any comment, um, and then I'll take a recommended motion. So, uh, yeah. So I'll open this up, uh, this public hearing up for anyone from the public that should want to comment on this. Looks like we do have a hand up. So, might be Shannon.
Can you overhear me?
Yep, yep, welcome, Shannon.
Hi, this is Shannon Holiday. I am a Commissioner with the Ferguson Township Planning Commission. And also with, a, a member on the Pine Grove Mills Small Area Planning Advisory Committee. As a, um, elected official myself, who is a person of color and who is a resident, a longtime resident in, in Ferguson Township, I don't support, uh, Conklin's, um, uh, proposal. And the reason I don't support it is because I feel that if something like that was to go into legislation or was to be enacted, it would prohibit people who ha- who have committed domestic violence in the past, served their time in incarceration. And it reformed, became reformed from that behavior, from being able to live their life to exemplify that reformation, if you will. So I think it would be unfair. It would be the same as, in my opinion, or in the professional opinion, is saying that a person can't ever change based on, uh, having had a, a, a past of domestic violence. And I do say that also as someone who has experienced domestic violence. Okay, so I do believe people can change. I don't believe people should be held guilty by the actions of their past as it relates to this specific topic. And that's what I wanna say.
Thank you so, thank you so much, Shannon. Um, looks like we have another, um, person's hat with their hand up. Welcome, just let us know your name and your municipality of residence.
Hello, everyone, good evening, Divine Lips Call. I am a resident of State College Borough. I want to start by, uh, saying thank you for holding this discussion. And I want to acknowledge the one hundred and twelve individuals who lost their lives in the state of Pennsylvania, uh, last year by domestic violence. As a person who is formerly incarcerated, and as the first black council member and formerly couns- uh, formerly incarcerated council member uh, in State College, uh, I must say that I cannot support the bill as it stands. And that, that does not mean that there isn't, um, a space in which, there's room for this to be discussed. When we look at, uh, the way the bill is written and what actually, um, leads to happen, it, it, it's not from, it's like, it is a sentencing, uh, issue that, that this, this should be addressing. When we're talking about enacting policies, uh, we have to remember that the long-term impacts, right? I have been home from incarceration for nineteen years. Uh, I have not committed, uh, an, an act of violence in, in well over ten years. And when we talk about, um, those differences, right? We're saying someone who sold drugs can still hold office, but someone who was violent in their past. And, and essentially what you're saying is that one person has redeemable qualities and the other person does not. And that in itself is, um, when we believe it or not, a form of discrimination. And so I think it's important to have this conversation, to look at the aspects in which we can make sure that everyone, uh, receives justice and while doing that, we make sure that everyone is able to move forward with their lives, um, as productive members of society, as individuals, who, who have entered spaces in which they can, uh, live, um, and prosper. Uh, I don't wanna take up too much time because I could literally stay on this topic for, for, for a while. But when we talk about who has redeemable qualities and who does not, and when we talk about domestic violence particularly, we should be looking at how we write these bills and how we do this legislation and who is directly responsible for this. This, again, it's sentencing, it's laws, um, and, and, and that starts from the judicial standpoint and not the municipality standpoint. Uh, because if we sentence individuals correctly, we won't even be at this point. Thank you for letting me share.
Thank you so much.
Uh, Chair, I do have an email that was sent to me from a resident.
Okay.
And so I did wanna read their, their comments without them being misconstrued with my own personal ones, so.
Yep, sounds good.
My name is Jeff Landers Nolan. I am a Pine Grove Mills resident and I wish to submit comments on the current bill proposed by Representatives Conklin barring people convicted of physical or sexual abuse of a household or family member from holding public office in Pennsylvania. I am a mental health professional and previously worked in domestic and sexual violence field for years. I greatly appreciate Conklin's intention in submitting the legislation. No person who uses tactics of power and control over another violates the bodily autonomy of another or in any way enacts a pattern of abuse towards others should hold public, uh, public office. However, despite the important intention behind this bill, I am seriously concerned about its impact as a result and as a result hesitate to support Ferguson Township drafting a resolution in support of this bill. My primary concern is the necessity of a conviction of domestic or sexual abuse in order to bar a person from public office within the writing of this bill. Conklin has acknowledged in discussing the bill that securing a conviction for DV or SA is extremely difficult in the U.S. Uh, R A I N N estimates less than three in one hundred rapes result in a criminal conviction. And stated that as a result, those convicted are worse, are the worst of the worst abusers. This assumption is extremely dangerous. Relying on conviction through the criminal justice system is, as the deciding factor for this bill, also makes it highly likely that the people are already marginalized and targeted by the legal system. People of color, LGBTQ plus communities, and poor people will be disproportionately targeted by this bill. Ease of conviction does not correlate with the likelihood of guilt in our criminal justice system as it is constructed on the foundation of oppression. For this reason, I urge extreme caution in supporting Representative Conklin's bill as is. I greatly support its intent, but I feel it must not rest on the, uh, validity of the criminal justice system that is fundamentally biased against specific populations and a poor tool in stopping intimate partner violence. Jeff Landers Nolan.
Thank you very much. Okay, that was Jeff Landers Nolan, thank you. Any other folks from the public here to comment on this item? All right, I'm seeing none, so I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. And we'll go ahead and open it up to, uh, board discussion before asking for a motion. Any?
Sure, I'm happy to start this off.
Sure.
Um, I just wanna thank everyone for that incredibly insightful, uh, public comment. We really appreciate it. Um, I've been quite vocal about my thoughts and insight regarding this bill, uh, so, and especially over the last few weeks. And it's been really helpful to hear different perspectives outside of my own, which sometimes align and sometimes illuminate different areas regarding the content and purpose. I feel as though I've elaborated on my views on how this bill does not support restorative justice, reproductive rights, voter disenfranchisement, or actual aid to survivors and domestic, survivors and victims of domestic violence. And those have all now been covered a good bit. But I do wanna clarify, in case there were any issue of clarity, domestic violence and abuse of any kind is beyond abhorrent and destructive to individuals, to relationships, and to families on the whole. Any tangible assistance that can be provided to not only aid survivors and victims of domestic violence, but also proactively try to prevent abusive environments should be promoted and enacted. I will say that to hear all of us, including those virtually, speak here coming from different lived experiences and therefore looking at this legislation through different lenses, and for many of us to have intense questions about the efficacy and intention of this bill tells me that in its foundation, it lacks structural integrity on its own. As this bill currently stands, as written on its own, I will not vote in favor of this resolution. However, I would like to open this up for the opportunity for further dialogue and development with Representative Conklin's office. If this bill can be recrafted to clarify the language used to ensure assistance to those seeking, uh, expungement, provide true public safety, and encourage full restorative justice, and further clarify the umbrella of abuse, as well as incorporate parts of larger, more proactive initiatives like allocating budget funds towards care and shelter facilities and employing more advocates and caseworkers. And furthermore, addressing systemic issues that permeate the holistic well-being of so many people that are deeply affected by this. Raising the minimum wage to a sustainable level, ensuring affordable workforce housing, providing accessible mental health care resources in schools and out, passing common sense gun safety measures like UPO laws, and closing background check loopholes, and codifying safe, legal, and accessible abortion and reproductive healthcare into the Pennsylvania Constitution, I would like to believe that together we can make our neighborhoods and districts more safe and more inclusive for all. I thank Representative Conklin's office for the previous work they've done regarding this topic in the past and surely the work they will continue to do. And I hope we can further collaborate on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
You go ahead, Lisa, I'll go ahead and do it.
I'll be the one to follow that. Thank you, Hillary. Um, I just, I agree with your comments and, you know, I'll start out by saying that I'm just, I'm troubled that, um, if in not supporting this, any one of us would be seen as not, um, very firmly against any acts of not only domestic violence, but other violent crimes. And so I, that should not need to be said. But as Hillary just stated so eloquently, it apparently does need to be said. So, um, just to reiterate that. And to, I to thank, um, Conklin's office for bringing this to us. It's been a, it's allowed us opportunities to look at what these, uh, different qualifications and parameters of prohibitions on serving there are. And so that's been enlightening. Um, in several of the discussions that I've had, we've discussed how as elected officials, we're often able and invited to join, um, school groups or other community groups where there are children present, yet we're not all required to have those clearances to interact with children. And so, you know, perhaps that's something that we should be moving on and looking to make as a required qualification for even us to serve. I would think that that'd be a standard. And so I appreciate that. I think that, uh, you know, a lot of the discussion that we had at the previous meeting doesn't need to be rehashed. I think those points were well-made. A few of the questions, I think, that had been asked, maybe weren't followed up on. I know I had asked about other lesser crimes, so non-felonies, that also would preclude a person from being able to serve in an elected office. So, other than financial crimes, which obviously directly relate to the job, I don't know of other ones. And so, as we've said before, you know, those financial crimes that would prohibit somebody from serving, there's a direct link between the job we're doing here oftentimes and especially in a position of an officership where you do possibly have some type of fiduciary responsibility. So there is a real, there's a real direct relationship there, uh, between the, the job and those, um, crimes that could bar somebody from serving. So if, if we're not talking about a direct correlation, then we're really talking about a judgment of, um, you know, morals of, uh, trustworthiness. And, you know, obviously, as I've said, you know, I would have questions about, um, the decision-making capabilities of somebody who was, you know, maybe recently convicted and sentenced of such a crime, is what we're talking about here. But there are probably others too, where I would think that that person may not be in the best position to make responsible decisions for a township. So, and the example I brought up last time is somebody convicted of multiple DUIs. And so they would lose possibly that, um, privilege to drive. So are, would I trust their judgment in making decisions sitting up on this board? You know, possibly not. So I think what Hillary's saying is something I would agree with. And that would be to look at not only the legislation, but also the way that this resolution is crafted. I have a few concerns just in the crafting of, and the wording of it. It really speaks to looking at, um, people who have committed heinous crimes, um, you know, violent crimes, but it's referring to them, they're in a very generalized manner, but we're really talking specifically about crimes, uh, committed against somebody within the household. And the resolution doesn't really reflect that. So, um, at a, at a minimum, I think the resolution needs reworded to accurately reflect on the bill that it is supporting. So that would be one, one problem I would have with it. But I think to Hillary's point, to continue working on something where needs are addressed, concerns are addressed, but also that actionable steps that can make a difference are, uh, are really looked at. You know, I would welcome that opportunity and I think, um, you know, if we can rework this resolution, first of all, regardless of what happens with the bill, I think that that's something that needs to happen. And then possibly, you know, if we can be a partner in crafting something legislatively that would addresses the concerns that have been expressed here and also acknowledges, really, the reprehensive nature of that, of a domestic violence crime. And, you know, I, I, I think there's several steps that need to be taken. I wish we could've had more time really to address these nuances in, in this particular situation. So that's kind of where I'm at.
Thank you so much. Chair has to go last, so.
Well, no, I just, I really have nothing more to add because I think Lisa and Hillary have said it so eloquently. I just, I do sort of feel that, um, it, it, it's not really, it is a reactive, um, piece of legislation as opposed to proactive. In particular, I think of, I, I understand, I, I greatly appreciate the, um, personal connection that Representative Conklin has with this because much like we've said here, domestic violence, um, it doesn't just affect those happen, the ripple effects takes everybody in. And so me personally, through my lived experience of having friends that have suffered through postpartum depression and have had sort of things take off on their own because of the mandated reporter system through doctor visits or something of that, things spiraled out of control. And I've had friends who have become amazing advocates for, um, domestic violence. It's not always, domestic violence is a nuanced topic. And, and it can particularly affect women and, um, postpartum women. And then also, uh, you know, being a Navy family for twenty-four years, we've had a number of friends who have been involved in domestic violence disputes. I don't know, again, because of the nature of military, you move on and you don't know what gets sentenced or prosecuted. But you don't go through multiple deployments and come home to a family situation where you just turn a switch on and off and one day you're a warrior and the next day you're Dad of the Year. And so I just, I, I, there's nuances to it. And I would hate to, um, as you said, like, prevent people. I give, people get the benefit of the doubt to be able to change and seek help. And, and I worry about that in this particular piece. But yes, anything to address domestic violence, I would support in a more proactive way. Yes, absolutely.
Thank you, everyone who's, who's giving their opinions. I, I really like to listen because most of the time when I, once I decide, I, I've decided. So I do like to listen to what everyone else is saying. Thank you for the public. I guess I just wanna add a couple of things, um, because really, um, Hillary- I guess I just want to add a couple of things, because really, Hillary, Lisa, you guys said a lot of it, but I am, I'm not a person that's interested in shortcut politics. And what I'm, what I mean when I say that is, I think, I think Councilmember Lipscomb said it well, there are things that domestic violence is like up here, and there's so many things that surround it that we need to fix as a nation and country that affect it. This bill here is trying to make a shortcut to try and not fix all the stuff that we actually need to fix, and I'm not interested in doing that. I'm interested in doing things that move us forward, but this isn't it. Again, we've already said it three or four times, this particular resolution does not help people who've been afflicted by domestic violence. It's, it was a nice thought, I guess, when I asked the question last time, it's like, oh, well, certain people don't want to see their abusers, where certain people don't want to see their abusers as the district attorney or the judges or the police officers, but they're not running for office, but they're still in the public eye. Like, so that's not really, that's not really it. This doesn't do anything. And when we think about domestic violence, Patty, I'm glad you brought up people who are ex-military, you have people who grew up in the foster care system, you have people who have all of these different issues and ailments that might couple to the fact of why they, why they've done what they've done, which is not an excuse. But to think someone can't be reformed is silly to me. Not everyone, again, and I, I said this before, but I'll have to say it again, not everyone who's been convicted is going to run to, run for office. They already have a lot of obstacles to get over. Why is it necessary for us to put another one? Because the likelihood is so low, it just doesn't make sense to add another, another form when, you know, you really don't know that situation. Are you going to sit down and talk to every, you're not going to. And I think, Lisa, you made a comment about, you know, what you would feel comfortable with, and I think that that's the, that's the purpose of voting, right? People who did not want Devine on the board just didn't vote for him because he was formerly incarcerated. But those people who did want him voted for him, and I think that that's, that's the point. Like, if you don't want that person, just don't vote for them. And if they get enough votes, then maybe some people saw something that you or I or somebody didn't see. But if this, this person is saying, like, I'm trying to give back to the community, I just, I just don't understand, like, why we need to put another barrier in place. Had Conklin came to us prior to presenting it, assuming that as an all-female board we would pass it, I would be more interested in going to death with it, but as far as Tierra is concerned, as is with changes, I'm not interested personally, because I don't see the benefit of it really having on. I'm interested in something totally different. Cool. But this to be re, no, you can't really, like, I don't know what the, what phrases you guys use up here, but we can't, we don't put lipstick on pigs? Is that what y'all say? Okay. So, that's what I mean with that.
We do now.
Well, not I. So, I'm just not going to be a part of that. But I do, I do, do think it should be said, Lisa. No one's here is saying that we are, we don't think that people who've committed domestic violence should be punished, that we think it's okay for people to go through it. Yes, women are affected, but men are affected by domestic violence just as much, and of course, the family dynamics. So, I don't think anybody on this board is for domestic violence. We just want something, something more proactive instead of reactive. So, honestly, I think, I think, I think that's it for me, but yeah.
Wow. Yeah. This is, thank you all. I have had, I guess, similar thoughts in terms of topically similar, but when I was thinking about this, I was focused on certain specific things prior to this conversation. So, I really do appreciate, really do appreciate everybody's contributions. I guess I'll just take a minute to say, I guess, one way I was thinking about this, two things I was thinking about. Felons are already prohibited from doing all of these things. So, I was thinking of it in making it equal kind of a thing, but I've seen how that's not, I was conceptually flawed what I was thinking about there. It's not going to make anything more equal. So, I've also had a personal, personal experience where an ex-felon really, they, like, really stood up for somebody in a domestic violence situation and really saved, really saved them. And the, the person that was, that was doing the domestic violence, you know, later became a police officer. And so, I thought that this, that this bill also addressed that. My, my understanding is that, that, that anyone, again, convicted, right, sentenced, I guess, specifically, would also not serve as a police officer. So, I was sort of like focused on that aspect, because I think that, I don't know, I think that you can't probably solve all of the problems at once, but you certainly have to be in the right, the right ballpark. So, I think that something that would, that would not have police officers who've been convicted of domestic violence showing up at houses for one, one domestic violence calls. So, that is an issue. So, if this were to address that, like I thought it did, I would be supportive of that. Other problems, I think, with how it's written, and my lack of certainty as to whether it actually does address that, which I apologize for, not seeing anybody else recognize that that was part of what they had understood of this. Okay. So, I'm sort of going from being more supportive to probably not, not supporting this. So, also for all the reasons really everybody said.
And I, I'm not sure if this is not the right time or place for this, or if this is something that we should do through virtual communication, if, only because we don't have a representative from Representative Conklin's office here to answer any further questions we might have, open up for any further discussion. I'm not sure if his office would be willing to, and not potentially in a quorum, I'm not sure how that whole, I mean, I, I'm kind of sure, but like, that's, that's a lot to deal with. If, if he would be willing to sit down with members of Ferguson Township and potentially any other further municipalities that might have questions as to what we view as structural inequities of this bill, I certainly would be in favor of that. I'm, and I don't know if that's a request that we should make to Acting Manager Madriker or to, to Centris when she is back, but, and like, I know that there are going to be people who, this is the end of the road.
I guess my opinion about that is, we, initially, we had a lot of questions. Like, a lot of us had questions. Lisa posed questions. Someone came last time, answered questions, but didn't get back with us. How many times do we need to ask their office to talk to us? I mean, I'm just wondering, like, that seems a little...
That's a great point, but as, as Representative Conklin is now, all of Ferguson Township is now in his new district, I think it would behoove his office to speak with the elected officials from that township.
Well, I don't think we should postpone the vote.
Oh, no, 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 no. Not about postponing the vote. Two different things.
So, all right. So, we do have a motion. I think we should go ahead and entertain it and take a vote, and then we can just have just a few minutes of conversation, then after that, just a follow-up on what Hillary has introduced there. Does that sound okay to everybody?
May I modify the motion?
Certainly. Of course, you, you don't have to do this.
Great. This is Hillary. I move that the Board of Supervisors do not adopt the resolution of the Township of Ferguson, Center County, Pennsylvania to support legislation that, and I really don't even like the phrasing of this motion because it frames this in a really bad light, but I just have not given much time to it, to support legislation that prohibits domestic violence offenders from holding state office.
This is Patty. I want to try to, should I, about the negative, I, it doesn't matter. Okay, so we're just talking about a procedural thing, about having a negative motion.
I was just about to ask that. How do you do a motion?
So, I don't even know how to, like, interrupt the motion, the motion.
I think you should just say how it's said, and I think it should just be voted down, so we can avoid any confusion.
Yeah, so if we, if we set it in the positive, we would just vote against it because there's some weird thing that happened. Anyway, there's, there's a Roberts Rule, and it's there for a reason that can really hurt you in a tie, really. Let's put it that way.
I will not make that motion.
Good, okay. And also, you can modify it in the positive. If you wanted to add something different, like the bill introduced, the legislation that has been, yeah, okay. All right. So, just withdraw that motion, maybe just to be sure.
This is Hillary. I withdraw that motion.
And then I'll, yeah, just to be clear. And then I'll entertain a motion on this topic.
I don't think anybody wants to make this motion.
Well, we do, because it's a public hearing, and there's, you know, I believe, don't we?
So, you, you can make the motion, you can second it, you can vote on it, and you can all be no's, and then it is not a resolution any longer. It can fail for lack of a motion also. So, whatever you'd like to have in the record.
I guess, I guess you're right. I guess we don't technically have to make a motion.
Right.
At, at this point, though, for me procedurally, what I am concerned about is I don't want for this to be delayed to another...
Still open.
Yeah, I don't want for this to be...
So, let's have the motion.
Okay. This is Patty. This is Patty. I move that the Board of Supervisors adopt the resolution, sorry, of the Township of Ferguson, Center County, Pennsylvania, to support legislation that prohibits domestic violence offenders from holding state office.
This is Lisa. I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right. This is a roll call vote.
Correct.
Thank you, Dave.
Sure. If it passes, it would be Resolution 22-13. Ms. Dinnany?
No.
Ms. Stevens?
No.
Ms. Strickland?
No.
Ms. Williams?
No.
Ms. Caldwell?
No.
Okay, motion fails five to zero.
Thank you, Dave. All right. Anything brief to add? Hillary, any thoughts? I mean, I, I love the idea of us having a discussion with Conklin's office about something that we'd like to say.
I'll come.
Yeah, and...
So, but, I mean, what's that mean, you know?
And for me, just kind of thinking about things...
It's important, though.
Right. Well, I mean, if we're, if we're really trying to ensure that our state legislators, and I think this is a term I used earlier today, like, it might be a Sisyphean battle, like, rolling a giant boulder up a hill. I know that, I, I, I know that Representative Conklin has been an advocate for, for, for bills in the past where it's just, it, it is simply hard to get things that are actually going to help the general public pass right now. It just is, and I understand that. But I think there needs to be, there needs to be a removal of barriers between municipal governments, between state legislators, particularly for those who you, you might have new constituents in your district. Like, let's, let's use this as an opportunity to open up for dialogue, because we have, and I, I, it is a surmountable road ahead of us in terms of individual freedoms and personal rights, but if we, if we do not commit to working together at every single level right now, I am truly afraid of what is to come. And so, this is an open invitation.
So, we could, yeah, go ahead.
And I just want to say, because, because it's, it still bothers me, and because Lisa felt like she had to say something, you know, I, I understand that we are a board, that, that we are all female, all female identifying, but that does not mean that, I don't feel like we have to make so many disclosures. We, we should be able to give our opinion on a, on a domestic violence issue without having to say that we're not, like, we should be able to do that, we should be able to make decisions regardless if we have uteruses or not. I just don't understand that, and I don't think that it was appropriate how it was presented. That's why I'm not as interested, you know what I mean, as everyone? But I will sit at the table because I know the conversation needs to be had, and I'm interested to see what, what is, you know, what the future can hold, but I just, I just want to put it out there that there is no, there is no set way that this board will decide things, that this board will do things just because we are the first all-female board. So, I just want to put that out there.
Okay, so I will just say, here's, so here are my thoughts on this, just to wrap, to wrap this up. So, we have a lot on our plate and on staff's plate, but this is really important.
It is.
So, wondering if we could, if we all agree that we want to open up that dialogue, if we could ask if Hillary wanted to write the first draft of the letter.
I would be more than happy to write the first draft of the letter. I am probably not the best heartbreaker, so I would respectfully request that this come from either the vice chair or the chair.
Well, it would then come back to us all as a board.
Totally fine.
But I'm just trying to offload staff.
Sure, oh, sure. Absolutely. Yeah, I, oh, I am more than happy to draft.
Okay. So, what I'm wondering is if we could make a motion. Dave, do you feel like we're going rogue while Centris is in here? Or is this okay?
This is wonderful.
All right. Okay. I think that we could make a motion.
He's saying that behind a mask.
That we could make a motion, that Hillary make the first draft.
Give me a hard deadline.
Two, two weeks.
By the beginning, maybe.
Great.
Yeah. Right, and then we'll, we can put it on the, either on the consent agenda, whatever Centris advises in terms of that. And do we even need a motion because it's just between us at this point, or?
I, I don't think you need a motion.
All right, we're all in agreement. Okay.
Cool.
We're good?
We're good.
Great. All right, wonderful. Thank you all.
I feel like I'm dominating this now, but I'm going to respectfully request that we...
Recede.
Yeah, recess, please.
All right.
For five minutes.
Break it up.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, five-minute recess. Okay. Oh, look, we're all in her... Oh, look, we're all in her. Okay. Okay. All right, let's go ahead and, uh, move on to discussion on school zone flasher on Cherry Lane, introduced by Dave Modrick.
At the regular meeting of the board on March first, I reported on a technical consult that I had with LTAP Local Technical Assistance Program. That was a follow-up to a study that was done regarding a multiway stop. I then met with, uh, school district representatives at the site, provided a brief history on that intersection. They, in turn, met with their, uh, board, and, uh, after reviewing the alternatives to improve safety, it was a consensus of those present, that consideration of a fifteen mile per hour school zone in conjunction with night lighting of the crosswalk was the preferred alternative. So township staff did review those improvements with the board and the manager. I feel like, uh, even at that time, uh, you would like staff to put something in the CIP. This kind of formalizes it, I believe. So the recommended motion is that the Board of Supervisors direct staff to include safety improvements on Cherry Lane to include a fifteen mile per hour school zone and night lighting in the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-seven capital improvement plan for the board's consideration.
Thank you, Dave Modrick. Dave did read our motion. Would anyone like to move that?
This is Sierra, I move the mo- I move the motion as read by Director of Public Works, Dave Modrick.
Thank you.
Mrs. Patty, I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion, questions? I have a quick question. Uh, the night lighting, will that be the kel- the low Kelvin? And will it be decorative, or is it going to be a tall gooseneck?
So we'll, we'll talk about all those options.
Okay.
Because, because depending on what you choose or direct, there's a cost associated with it. So the lowest cost would be to contact West Penn Power and have them put a fixture on an existing pole that they own, and then we pay for it on a tariff, so we don't have the upfront installation cost.
Gotcha.
I'll have to have a discussion with them to see what, uh, fixtures are available to us, and if it meets the, you know, the low Kelvin output.
Okay.
And if not, then we can have further discussion about what you would prefer to see there.
Okay, thank you so much.
Mm-hmm.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Uh, if no other questions, um, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any of those saying aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you so much.
Next up, discussion on Pine Grove Mills Mobility Study Report, also introduced by Dave Modrick. Dave, you're busy tonight.
Sure. At the June seventh regular meeting, uh, the board received a presentation on the Pine Grove Mills Mobility Study by Rob Watts, our consultant, and Ron Seibert, our township engineer. At that time, the board received the report, really didn't have any discussion. Uh, tonight, you may use this time, if you like, to discuss, uh, any of the alternatives recommended in the report. Provide any comment to staff on the report. The township engineer, uh, is here. He could then direct McCormick Taylor to finalize, uh, any items in the report. If you don't have a lot of discussion, um, then you would simply, you know, accept the report as written.
Thank you.
Yes.
I think, uh, let's go ahead and entertain a motion.
This is Lisa, I'll move that the Board of Supervisors accept the Pine Grove Mills Mobility Study Report and direct staff to allocate funds to the capital improvement plan for advancement of the project.
Thank you.
This is Sierra, I second the motion.
Thank you. All right, let's have some discussion. Lisa.
Thanks so much, and thanks for the presentation on this at the previous meeting. It was really, really good, I thought. Um, you know, the entire written document that's, uh, that was in that agenda, uh, was just so well laid out. So it was obviously, um, uh, a very well-done survey, so, or, study, so, um, you know, I have a couple of, I guess, you know, small technical questions. I think, uh, bigger picture, um, you know, I already mentioned the grant that we have for improvements in the area. So when we're coming into the CIP, planning time, um, and prioritizing those, uh, projects, are you going to be working on prioritizing those projects based on the grant funding, and what's going to go toward that, and have some different options available to the board? Or as we're walking into that, should we be comparing numbers and?
Sure, so, so in the CIP, I did, uh, the draft that, that you're going to review, that, that will be presented to you, did prioritize the projects that were included within the grant application, because we have funding, seven hundred thousand dollars. So that includes shoulder widening both sides of Pine Grove Road from just, uh, west of the church beyond the elementary school to about Ross Street and about that area, to allow for, uh, on-lane bike, um, shoulder traffic, sharrows through town, uh, and then a, uh, rapid rectangular flashing beacon on, on Nixon Street, and, um, pedestrian improvements to include new sidewalks on the, uh, on the west side of Water Street heading south from the flashing light to, uh, Chestnut Street. So, so those will all be in there as one project, because that's, that is what we applied for and have funding for. They do flush out in the mobility study. The, what I might s- call the, um, the other priority project would be, uh, improvements to, to the flashing light at twenty-six forty-five. And so either now or at the CIP, the board can have discussion about, you know, what you would like included and what year. So I do have some placeholders in there for your consideration.
Perfect, okay, well, thank you so much for that. So that answers that question. At that other presentation, you know, they had asked us to prioritize the projects a little bit, and then also, the second part of that was selecting our preference for a couple of things that were still options. So, um, at Meckley, did we want the roundabout, and at the flashing yellow light, did we want the roundabouts? Um, so that would be the other question. Okay, so that answers that. So we don't even really need to go through a lot of the, um, smaller items that the grant will cover, because you're working through that, yeah, okay.
And I really think it's just up to you how you want that final report to look. If you want it to remain with alternatives at those intersections for future consideration of funding, you can accept the report as it is. If you feel strongly about one of those improvements over the other, and you would rather the final report indicate that, so in the future, those that look at it, understand that, you know, there was a strong preference for that, then I would, you know, suggest that you i- indicate that al- favored alternative at that intersection in the final study.
Okay.
Did that make sense?
It did, and that's really interesting. That goes into one of my other questions. So on the long-range plan, um, through the county, our long-range transportation plan through the county. So on there is a major realignment of twenty-six to Nixon, um, even getting rid of a building to kind of straighten that road out. We're making improvements now that I think will really alleviate some of the problems that that is trying to address long-term. Um, and, you know, I'm not a supporter of that realignment, so I'm wondering how whatever we've chose here affects that long-range plan, and can we work then through the county, through CCMPO, and working with PENDOT to reframe what that project is down the road? And part of that is a fully functioning traffic light, and that impacts what we decide now, because in the report, it says that we choose a roundabout, it would be very difficult then to move backwards toward getting a fully functioning traffic light.
So while I can address that, um, I'm gonna allow Ron Seibert to go up to the podium, because he chairs the technical committee, you're on the MPO, and maybe just, we'll let, let Ron, uh, answer that question for us.
Thanks, I realized I was staring at him when I was asking, should have invited him up, so sorry, Ron. It's all good.
Can I just, before you go into that, just building on something Lisa said, I want to just ask you a question about the geometry of that intersection and long-term consequences. So it seems like, it seems like we could signalize that intersection without doing a taking, but, but PENDOT doesn't want us to, and they want us to do a taking on the historic building. But the proposed circle does a taking on the gas station. So is it true that the geometry of the intersection, like, makes it, a circle will right align, right, go over the gas station? Whereas the realignment that they're pro- proposing is a left align, because they have to make the road go straight to achieve their goal of not running into a building and just going down the hill instead. So that goes to that longer t- term question. Do you see how? Okay.
I'll, I'll try to take them in bites.
Okay, thanks.
If I get off track, correct me, and we'll get back where we need to go. So, um, just going back to, to Lisa, what you said about a, a roundabout, perhaps precluding the installation of a traffic signal, probably spot on, because if we have a functioning roundabout that's servicing the intersection, that we don't have the delay or the safety issues, would be hard pressed to meet any type of criteria to install a traffic signal. And again, for those that haven't heard or didn't know, you just can't put a signal in where you want it. There are specific warrants that have to be met before we can even think about putting that signal in, and right now, we don't meet them. A roundabout, if it would function well, would probably say we would maybe never meet those criteria for a signal. Now, I hate to say never, because never is a really long time, but based upon, you know, what we see out there now and the current trends for development and traffic coming into the area, it would be pretty unlikely, um, that we would meet that warrant for a signal if a roundabout would go in. It may be hard to meet it, even if a roundabout doesn't go in, just leaving the intersection as a stop control. So keep that in mind, too, uh, if we're holding out, well, let's just leave it as a stop sign, because we might be able to put a signal in in the future. It's a might.
Because the PENDOT formula discounts right turn.
Correct, correct. Now, if the, if the laws change, then the rules, you know, then we could look at it differently, but the way it is right now, um, that's, that's, those are the rules we have to follow, and we stick with those. Um, one intersection topology versus the other with respect to effects on a future long-range transportation plan project, that crystal ball is too cloudy for me to even try to guess. It really, really is. Um, you know, that's a project that's, it's off on the list of projects that aren't even funded for future consideration. So it's out there as a potential project, but I don't know how far people have even gone with that project to saying the scope, need, and purpose of it, um, to know what it would even look like, and to be able to say how one or other of these projects might affect that in the future. So I wish I had a, a good answer for you. I, I don't. But I, I, yeah, one might say, well, you put, you put the roundabout in, you're going to preclude it. Not necessarily. Um, you, you could make arguments for why the roundabout doesn't meet a project purpose and need that would allow a project to move forward to remove the roundabout and do something different. But again, that's, that's out there pretty far. I, I just, I couldn't give you a good answer one way or the other on that. Lisa thought about it, kicked it around a little bit, it's like, too, too cloudy for me, sorry.
That's fair.
Yeah.
And I think, like I said, I'm not supportive of realigning Nixon to Water Street. I don't think that is a good plan for that area, so, you know, my hope would be that over time, needs are met through whatever actions we're taking now, and whatever stays on the long-range plan is, doesn't have to be as drastic as that.
Yes.
So, but I don't want to just hope for that. I want to make something concrete happen with that, you know, over the next few years, so that, you know, so that we're really, uh, practically planning for what's needed there. So, you know, that thing is, I think it's at like twenty fifty right now, so nobody's looking at that right now, but it is on there. So I think it's just something, uh, you know, we can keep talking about, and, and as, you know.
There's always opportunity to have dialogue at the MPO level for what that project looks like.
Yeah.
As we move forward.
Yeah, so, you know, so if we can have those conversations, probably you and I having those conversations, and just, you know, looking at the next update of that plan, that we just, you know, take a look at it and see what's in there and how, what we're deciding here should affect that. So that's that. So then, um, uh, I guess just to, you know, say what my preferences are at this point, looking at that, just to take two minutes now, because it's very difficult to get into.
Definitely now.
This kind of thing at the CIP in the detail it deserves, because those are super-long meetings, and we're talking about everything. So it's, everything, so to just, since we're focused on this now, it might be a good time to just say what our, you know, initial thoughts are. You know, in, in looking at it, the way I'm leaning right now is toward the stop-controlled, um, intersections at the flashing yellow light and at Meckley. So at Meckley, I just don't think that the cost of the roundabout at this point is justified with the amount of traffic. That's my read on it right now, and when, um, you bring up how do we want the report to look, that's a great point, because I would still want that roundabout as an option in the report, so that if that traffic is really building up over time, um, and we don't go with the roundabout at this point, that, you know, those studies are still in there for someone to see that this was looked at. And then at the flashing yellow light, I'm, you know, I had thought that initially, looking at the, the smaller roundabout, the larger roundabout, and the stop control, I thought that smaller roundabout seemed like a good option, but now that that's taken out, and even the more I think about it, I just don't know if that would really meet all the needs right there. Um, and so I think I'm, at this point, favoring that stop control. I think, you know, obviously, the cost is lower. I think, um, all the other things we'd have to get into with creating a larger roundabout there, I think would really, really maybe be such an obstacle that it, it could be a very long, long process to get everything approved and get that in there and paid for. So, you know, I'm really looking at, you know, and, not that it's going to be easy, but an easier solution that would maybe have a bigger safety, uh, bang for our buck at this point. And then part of that was the, in the drawings, they really bumped out, uh, the corner. And then part of that was the, in the drawings, they really bumped out the corner at, how do I describe it? That was indoor floors. Yes, coming down Water Street. So that building, the street was narrowed a little bit. That's Pine Grove Road on that side. So that's going to slow traffic coming through. It provided greater visibility for when you're coming down Water Street and you're going to go west on Pine Grove Road. It's very difficult to see around that building.
Yes.
So, yeah, thank you. So, you know, having those bump outs and the lanes narrowing a little bit there is part of my preference for that stop control. And those enhanced pedestrian crossing areas with the flashers. I mean, I think these are all things that people are familiar with. I think they'll work well there. I think, you know, I have other concerns about the roundabout right there. So I just, this is what I am supportive of right now. So that, I guess, just to lay that out there so I have a little foundation moving into the CIP.
Yes.
Is that something the board would like reflected in the actual report? That there's a preference one or the other or just kind of leave them as alternatives and know that that'll be a discussion at the CIP meetings?
Yeah, I mean, maybe. I think we might want a preference, but let's, let's kick it around a little bit more. Yep. Thank you for that thorough overview. Can I build on that a little bit? Okay, great. I agree, endpoint, I agree that I think that the stop measure at the blinking light is what we want to go for. And my question is, how, how similar to the, the SCASD thing that we just did? How similar of a process is it going to be? And here's why I'm asking that because, you know, someone, some staff member, and I'm sorry, I don't remember who, did a wonderful history of this intersection and how long elected officials have worked on this problem. And it was like a thirty-year history. So you, I, like some, some people in this room, I don't think were even born yet when we started working on this as a board. So when Lisa says she wants to do something that's possibly doable, like that really rings true to me. Like I want something that we can do first, just something that we can do. So can we do that? Can we put stop signs there? Can we throw some cement in a bucket, you know, and poke a stop sign in it and plop them out there? Can we, how easy is it? I'm exaggerating, of course, everybody, viewers at home. I'm exaggerating a little bit. But, right, that is paint and some signs that we're talking about right here.
Well, there's more than that.
Okay.
This concept also involves some new curbing as well. So that corner that Lisa was pointing out over here in front of what was indoor floors.
Okay.
We're actually pushing those lanes to the north. So they used to be back out here. So we're creating a bit of a chicane effect. It gives us a bigger area on that corner to make a pedestrian landing with the ADA.
Okay.
And it also shortens that crosswalk distance. So it's not just painting signs. It is more than that.
Gotcha.
But I would say.
Sorry, I didn't mean it like.
No, no, I just didn't want you to think it was like we can just go write a letter and get it done.
Go get some plaster of Paris right now.
No, it, everything you see here is, is doable. Like there's nothing here that's that pie in the sky that can't be engineered.
Right.
And designed and permitted. So again, we're on a state highway, so we need to get permits from PennDOT to do this work.
But this is, you know, we, we just learned about warrants, right? So this, though, it, it's like it's going to meet whatever warrants there is to meet.
The only thing on here that we'd have to get, would justify has already been looked at. And that is the, the rectangular rapid flashing beacons. Those are electronically controlled traffic devices, so we have to get a permit for those as well. But we walk through the preliminary view of those and, and everything here meets the criteria to say, yes, we need to check boxes those could go in.
At that intersection?
Well, it's actually, the one is at the intersection, the other one's down in front of the post office, right? So we have, we have two locations that would have it. One right here, crossing on the curve of the post office.
Great.
And then one back here just west of Water Street.
Gotcha.
The, the other two crossings here at the stop signs would not have those flashing beacons. We cannot put them in on a stop controlled approach.
Okay.
Only an uncontrolled approach or a mid walk.
The through, the through right there.
Correct. Yep. So we're advising, we're, we're warning the through, the cars that are moving that there's a person that's pushed a button and is either wanting to or is in the process of crossing the street.
And in terms of the CIP and cost, you'll plan this in a way that the costs, it's like tiered. So like we could do it in stages, like the curbing and the painting and the stop sign and then the beacons. Or do, is it best to do, and we don't have to get kind of into this tangent right now, but should we expect an, how should we expect that to come?
My, my, my gut feeling is it's probably going to be all one project. However, what you might consider, and this is just coming to me as we speak, is that you, while it, perhaps while it's in design and permitting, you could put some of those in like quasi temporary with paint and delineators and whatnot to kind of set your traffic patterns and then follow up with construction. Ron's scratching his head, so he might not like that idea.
Yeah. Well, we're going to take some of that paint, that chalk paint that the, the bike, bicycle issue. So we're going to, can we do that though? Can we? It's a state route.
Whatever we do, we have to get.
It's very possible. You could, you could do it two-stage, kind of like Dave says because in the department, this wouldn't be too far off base from the traffic coming handbook because a lot of times they suggest that you, before you do something permanent, do it in a temporary measure. So maybe we do something with not just paint and chalk, but we put some temporary bollards in to choke down the lane so cars are forced to as if it was a curb, those kind of things. To kind of, you could just say, here's a test period to see the way I like it as we're working on the design.
Can we highlight this? What do, what do others think of the, this being highlighted as the preferred option? So that the other option for this intersection, because the small roundabout, in terms of doing anything, if we're going to do anything. The small roundabout was removed because it wasn't really engineering feasible. Would be the large, there it is, large roundabout that involves a taking of the gas station and a lot more money, I'm sure, right?
It, it's more, but it's probably not as much more as you might think. Do you remember what the numbers are?
I think the big wildcard on it, which isn't reflected in the cost estimate, is environmental and right away.
True.
Because we didn't have those, if you look in the report at the cost for the two options, there's a big asterisk. At least I hope there is a big one because those are just too hard to predict at this level of conceptual design. And that's kind of, it's kind of usual customary. We have the same things with Northland Mobility, you know. Here's the big picture cost, but before you go advancing it, look into what we need for utilities, environmental right away. So with acquiring that, that commercial property on the corner, there, there'd be costs over and above what's included in the report. So I think that's what probably separates the two significantly. The, the stop control, if there's any right away requirements, it'd be pretty minimal.
Okay, great. Others thought on that intersection, the choice. So I, I would love to see this then highlighted as the priority.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
I know what we're trying to do, but is there any, do you have like any data statistics of how many accidents actually happen in roundabouts? I'm just wondering, just because I, I come from an area like where there's a lot of roundabouts, like around the college that I went to. And there were a lot of accidents in those roundabouts because people wouldn't wait to, to yield or they're trying to, or is it a two-lane round? It's a two-lane roundabout?
No, it'd be a single.
Single lane, okay.
Yeah, we're not quite ready for, we're quite not ready for two-lane roundabouts.
Roundabouts, okay.
I think we're still learning the single lanes. We're getting better with them. We're getting better with them.
Wondering like, you know, I know what we're doing, but I just, you know, do you think it will increase accidents with all these drivers that just started driving two years ago?
You know, based upon historical data, not just here, but around the country. Roundabouts are, are much safer than a stop controlled intersection. And they're even safer than a signal controlled intersection in most cases. So.
Thank you.
Sometimes we can't put them in where we want to.
Did you say I have another question? I do have one more, which is very minor, but just looking at that, looking at the stop control.
The other one?
Picture, yeah. So many people cross from Nixon to the gas station on the side, yes, on that side right there. So if there can be some signage of no crossing, cross at crosswalk because that's, that won't just stop because, I mean, and it's always kids on bikes right there. So, yeah, so if we can just add somewhere in there to add that signage right there.
Yeah, accidents, I, thank you for saying that because that does, I'm, I'm also thinking of pedestrians and not just, just cars.
Absolutely.
Bike riders now.
pedestrians are the biggest vulnerability at this intersection, I think. People and cars really don't have a problem unless you're trying to turn left, a left onto forty-five.
That's, that's going to be a, a tough one there. I mean, you got to change people's behavior and habits.
We see what happens on Blue Course. They just go diagonally.
So we.
Maybe signage like weeks prepared, like this will be changing, this will be, that kind of thing maybe helps. Does it help? I don't know if it technically helps.
I think that's one we're going to have to think about.
Think about that.
Yeah, because we can, we can put the improvements there, but we can't make people use them.
But also, won't that be less of a problem? Maybe we want to, can we lean in and put a crosswalk there? Because if there's a stop sign at the downhill, then if somebody splits in that crosswalk, that person at that stop sign actually needs to stop. I don't know why the red blinking light doesn't mean that they need to stop, but I'm sure the stop sign will. Anyway, it's just, I mean, theoretically, this is going to mean then now people stop. Because that's part of the issue, right? People don't stop there.
Well, stop signs don't make people stop either. Just like, just like traffic lights don't make people stop.
So are they going to slow down for this crosswalk?
It's what they're supposed to do.
So I hear what you're saying about that, that crossing and I'll say these are conceptual. But that is definitely something we'll be thinking about and looking at as we do end of design.
We do want to prioritize, we do want to prioritize this because we think it's most doable. But I want to ask a question about the long, do we want to?
I do.
I think we do. We think that we want to prioritize this because it's the most doable and likely most, it's likely to get done and solve as many problems as possible within our power. I mean, the only alternative, I mean, it's like, it's kind of like, it's a huge problem because this, there was another proposal once, sorry to get off on a tangent, but there was another, this intersection is such an issue that there was like a proposal to go from, I don't know, mid mountain, top of the mountain, somewhere near the top of the mountain, kitty, like diagonally across the whole mountain, down through Musser Gap and then like coming out at Blue Course Drive through some of the most sensitive, environmentally sensitive watershed area. So, but that, that is the alternative that was proposed, right, years ago because of this intersection right here. So it's, it's a huge, and probably nothing is going to be great. But this is, this is a really good design and thank you for doing it.
I did have one more comment on the report. It noted that there'll be a question about whether or not we want to continue using the flashing light, right? Once this is, once we've taken other measures that was in there. So that, am I, did I read that correctly?
I don't remember that verbiage in there, Lisa. It may be.
Okay. So there was something to that effect in there. So, and just, you know, to Laura's point, I just, I'm hesitant to not keep that there. It's easier to just, yeah. Yes, I want this to be in addition to that because that kind of surprised me when I saw that in there. And maybe that was only pertaining to the roundabout, but the way it was laid out in the report, it looked like it could have.
With the roundabout, it definitely would not stay.
Right, and this looked like it was an option. So that's why I read.
With a stop controlled intersection, there's no reason you could not keep the flasher up there. It does not violate anything.
Yes.
Great, 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 great. Okay, then I just wanted to go back to the grant focus. So that will be in the CIP also, but we have seven hundred and some thousand dollars in that grant. And then the list of things you said were shoulder widening on State Route. Do we need like permits from them and they charge us? Do they charge us money for those permits or?
They may have, I think they estimated that they would have something like five thousand dollars of staff fees that would get charged to the project. But it, it'll be covered in the, in the grant funding.
Okay. And then the sheroes, are they on Nixon Road? Are we putting them on?
So the sheroes are on Pine Grove Road. And we have to probably in final design determine if we want to continue them on Nixon, if it makes sense.
Okay.
The idea is it would be the logical connection to something, either the bike path, you know, on Nixon that gets you to that rectangular rapid flashing beacon.
Right. I guess just thinking about the integrated hole of the village, you know, people don't typically go, they don't typically access that bike path from that intersection. They would find a different way to get there, I think, which would, I just, the sidewalks are so like narrow and then they, I think they end and I don't know. So the bike path is kind of up further and it just, I'm not sure if sheroes are going to be great there. Anyway, you can figure that out. You're the engineer. Yeah, it just, I just wonder if we can ask the Pine Grove Mills Small Area Planning Committee, again, which way people actually walk or bike and try to make that path happen in that particular leg. I just don't, I just don't know that people access it that way.
So may not need, there may not be a preference for sheroes on Nixon.
Right, and it may just not be that helpful for them. They may find, anyway, so that's a little bit of a detail. But the sidewalks on Water Street leading to Chestnut, I would love to see them prioritized. But are you, how, how do you think that you'll manage that grant like for us? Do you think it will, do you think it will happen next year first?
So what we need to do immediately, if not sooner, is get a consultant on board.
Okay.
And we either go through the consultant selection process or we don't. There's advantages and disadvantages and part of that has to do with who does the inspection for us also. So we internally have to select a consultant, either through the formal process or through our own process, which is not quite as formal as the PennDOT process. Get them on board, start the design, start the permitting so that we can start to access that construction money.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's something, and we have funding in the budget this year to do the engineering.
Okay.
So that's already programmed. It was programmed in anticipation of getting a grant.
Awesome.
Yeah, so that, that work needs to start as soon as possible.
Okay. Thank you for that, that.
And then the construction money.
So you might even have by the end of the year, information on the costs of each of the components of, that are, or not?
It'll probably be next year. I mean, we have, we have a budget estimate that staff prepare, Ron and I, that's how we got.
I mean, at the next level of estimation, yeah.
Yeah, that, that's probably going to be in the next year until the consultants get that level of detail.
The reason, I'll just then say to the board, the reason why I'm talking about prioritization of that, everything is important. But that sidewalk is an important connector between the village and the Chestnut Street trailhead for the mountain there. So right now, the sidewalk ends about, I don't know, halfway to that location. And kind of the next, and it's not really at all safe to go along that road. And then the other opportunity to access the trailhead is kind of a lot further west down in Pine Grove Mills. So that's why I'm sort of prioritizing that. Do you think we could get money from DCNR to match or something like that, given that they really want to make access there? So, anyway, just a thought.
Yeah, I'll write a comment, give myself a.
That was my, sort of my last comment. And then can we, like Lisa was saying, in lieu of the roundabout at Meckley, can we put stop signs there? Again, I'm just mystified by us being allowed to put stop signs on a PennDOT road like that.
There's the alternative that Ron might be able to bring up there. But there was, there was the roundabout and I think the stop controls are on Meckley, not on Pine Grove Road.
Oh, well, they're already there. You, oh, you mean more?
Well, RFBs, the rectangular rapid flashing beacons.
Okay, I see.
In conjunction with stop signs control on the side streets.
So there's already stop signs there, so it's really the addition of the flashing?
It's, it's the crossing with the.
Yeah, for the most part.
I personally don't support that necessarily. Like this, the flashing things there, I think that neighborhood is kind of already sort of under, they're really close to a commercial area. I think those flashing lights, I don't know if they'd have concern, if they'd feel like that would be helpful for them to cross there. I don't know. I'd want neighborhood input into that. And then I'd want to like, is it, is it really going to be cost beneficial there? Speeding is very bad there. Speeding, people open it up right. Speeding, people open it up right there, so that's why.
The roundabout would solve that.
That's why I want the roundabout there. And I don't even like roundabouts, put me on the record, I don't like them. But this is where I would put one.
Well, two.
Because it will solve the problem where I don't think this would.
Two very quick points to that. In the study, there was also an enhanced crossing at Rosemont, I think.
Mm-hmm, correct.
So, you know, so really, people coming from this way could access that safer crossing if we didn't do anything here at.
At Rosemont.
Rosemont. Um, oh, and the other thing is that currently, with the construction at Shingle Town Road, at the Y, the speed goes from twenty-five in front of the Naked Egg to forty-five for five seconds. And then you're at thirty-five through the construction area. And I think as you're driving, you can see how that should just always be thirty-five through, at least through Meckley, so.
Separately, for construction, or forever?
No, I think forever, because you, uh, because of the transition going downhill into a twenty-five mile an hour area in front of the Naked Egg, it shouldn't be forty-five there. So this is another thing that maybe you and I can follow up on.
The, the, the work zone speed limit at thirty-five is, is temporary.
Yes.
Once the intersection work is done, it'll go back to the forty-five that's, that was there before.
Yeah, but I think, you know, it's a good opportunity for discussion about how it makes more sense for that to always be thirty-five.
Sure, and one of the things, uh, was pointed out in the report, I wanna highlight too, with this option to have that mid-block crossing, it requires the speed limit to be reduced. We can't do one of these in a fifty mile per hour, or forty-five where people are going fifty miles per hour. Um, it's not safe, so we need to get the speed limit down, we need the speeds down in order to do this. So we'd have to work with a department in order to get that speed transition zone moved further out, where we're hopeful we can do it as part of the entrance into the, into, in Pine Grove Mills.
I see.
Mm-hmm.
So that might be helpful, then.
Now, will, will people obey it and follow it, I don't know, but at least if we can get the posting down, we hope we get the cars slowed down. And this, this option for those rectangular rapid flashing beacons is on the table then. Um, and I'd just point out too, those, those beacons just sort of is on the same page, they don't flash all the time. They only flash when a person pushes a button to warn the cars to come, so they're not on all night long. It's only when people are trying to cross the street.
Okay.
And if we would do something like this, we'd also probably try to incorporate lighting with it as well. I don't like doing marked crosswalks without lighting.
We just need a lot of education around these things.
Yeah, they're, they're new to the area, sure.
We had this, um, at Westerly Parkway, at Welsh Pool before.
Sure, before the signal went in.
Before the signal went in, and people just assume that cars are gonna stop, and they don't always. And it was, it was a very dangerous time, it's a very busy road, and this will be the same.
It's very, very important to pedestrian.
A lot of education.
The pedestrian makes eye contact with the driver.
Yeah.
That's the safest thing they can do, so that they know that they've been acknowledged and the car's slowing down. If they're not, wait.
Yep, yep.
It's not worth your life.
So for this, just to wrap this up, so we, so for this particular project portion, what, what does that report say that we're accepting? Is there a priority for either this stop measure or that roundabout in there, or is it just equally stated?
Yeah, right now, they're not presented as one over the other.
Okay.
And so, that would be a comment that you can make tonight, if you'd like.
Okay.
And then the final report will reflect that.
I don't know, I think we have differing opinions on this. I would, for financial reasons, of course, that, but for wanting to cut the speed, I pro this. So I think we could just, like, leave it like it is, and somebody in the future can figure it out.
So, are we going to make the motion, that's here?
Uh, I think we already did, didn't, we already made the motion.
Oh, we already made the motion?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So we're just talking.
Um, so, we just wanted to kind of clarify a few things for moving into the CIP. Did we clarify things, Dave?
I, I think you did for Ron to relate to the consultant, uh, in terms of the final report. In terms of accepting the report, did, did you do that at, at the last meeting? You feel like you accepted the report?
I think we, uh, uh, made a motion just now and seconded it.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
And you've, you all voted in favor?
Well, I think we're talking after making it.
Oh, this is discussion.
Does, does anybody remember that?
Yes, Lisa made the motion, and Tiara seconded it, this is discussion. And now you're ready to, now you're ready to vote.
Okay, so there's no other topics?
Oh, we're ready to vote.
We're ready to vote, yeah, yeah, yeah. Any other?
Not, not on my behalf, I'm here to answer your questions. So we did our dog and pony show the last month, so this is just follow-up.
I'm gonna call for a vote, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign.
Got it.
All right, motion passes unanimously, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, we're excited about this study, as you can tell. Um, before we move on, those painted lines, the lines, the line parking line painting? Parking line painting, parking space line painting, is that already happening? Or do we have to do something to make that happen?
At, at what location?
In Pine Grove Mills, on the basis of this study. Is that?
That is one of the recommendations in the report, but it's probably not one of the high priorities, so.
Okay.
It would then be up to the board as we move through the process, through the years.
Okay.
As to, you know, what kind of priority you wanna put on that.
So I'm just gonna form a bridge between the small area planning folks and us here, um, and that particular thing. We think it's not a priority, but it's a really major priority for the businesses there. Um, because people can't understand where they can park and where they can't park. Um, because the signage is a little bit confusing. So we've improved the signage, but those lines painted on the road will be what really, like, show them where they can park, so.
Maybe I misspoke, uh, can you back up to the podium and talk about the priority on the line striping?
I'm just in terms of procedure, since we have already made the vote on this, like, is this something that needs to be referred back to the planning, or the, sorry, the small area plan?
I'll give you a quick answer.
Quick, it's quick.
No, because it's already a tier-one project.
Okay.
So it's not something we've talked about tonight.
Okay, that's what I thought.
But in the, in the back of the mobility study report, there was, all the projects were listed, and there was like tier-one projects. Not that any one is more important per se than the other, but some are moving forward faster than others. But the, um, the project that was the parking improvements on Pine Grove Road from Water Street Elementary School, from Rosemont Drive Elementary School, from Pine Grove Road to Water Street, from Pine Grove, all this stuff, there's like four different lines in there, they're, they're all considered tier-one projects.
Okay, thank you.
They probably haven't garnered a lot of attention because they're not heavy lifts.
Right.
These are not things that we have to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on, so it's just, it's gonna take some staff time.
Okay.
It's gonna take some clarification of ordinances versus postings, verifying where we can, re-looking at, uh, site distance based upon reduced speed limit, because when, a lot of those site distance restrictions for parking are based upon the thirty-five mile per hour that used to be out there. So some of those, we might be able to shorten them up a little bit, maybe gain a spot here or there.
So that's already in the pipeline?
It's a tier-one project, it's just someone has to say, do this.
Okay, would it be helpful if the small area planning committee did ask you to do that, or the board, or, okay, the board?
Yeah, we take direction from the board supervisors.
Okay, all right.
Actually, it comes through him, but.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Okay.
Thanks. All right, uh, next up, new business. And we have the consent agenda, which had an item added, the Greens Landscape Pay Application. Um, so we have the voucher report, lots of pay apps, and the UHJA alternate appointment to Ferguson Township Authority Board and Commission, so I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
This is Tiara, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
This is Hillary, I second.
Thank you, uh, any questions, concerns? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. We're on to a public hearing on the resolution of Township of Ferguson, Center County, Pennsylvania, amending the Ferguson Township Personnel Policy Manual by amending section thirty-three general IT to add section thirty-three point five, a multi-factor authentication policy for all staff and authorities, boards and commissions with access to email account or virtual private network owned by the township, attached heretofore as exhibit A respectively. Uh, this will be, uh, introduced by Dave Modrick.
Who in turn will ask Angela Colkey if she'd like to introduce it, so she is in attendance with us.
Welcome.
Hello. Uh, provided, provided with the agenda is a copy of the resolution advertised for public hearing amending the Ferguson Township Personnel Policy Manual, section thirty-three general IT by adding section thirty-three point five multi-factor authentication. Um, the board adopted the policy at the last meeting on June twenty-first. Uh, cybersecurity insurance coverage has previously strongly recommended that we implement this, and, um, now we will require the MFA to maintain coverage beginning January twenty-twenty-three. Um, basically, all this resolution is doing is just allowing us to add the, um, policy that we adopted at the last meeting to the personnel manual.
Thank you so much. Angela, wonderful, um, and this is a public hearing, so I'm gonna open it up to the public. Would anyone care to comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and, uh, we'll entertain a motion.
This is Hillary, I move that we, uh, that the board of supervisors adopt the resolution amending the Ferguson Township Personnel Policy Manual by amending section thirty-three.
This is Patty, I'll second.
Thank you, any questions, discussion, all right, um, this'll be a roll call vote.
This is resolution twenty, twenty-two dash thirteen, Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Strickland?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Caldwell?
Yes.
Ms. Donini?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. All right, next up, a public hearing on a resolution of the Township of Ferguson, Center County, Pennsylvania, authorizing the township to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Patton Township, State College Borough, and the Penn State University, as parties of the Regional Records Management Consortium to acquire the services and expertise of a consultant to write and develop a request for proposal for a regional records management system. This will be introduced by Sergeant Sean Morrison, welcome.
Hello. So in, uh, two thousand sixteen, the Regional Records Management Consortium began searching for a new shared records management system. Uh, we went live with it in two thousand and nineteen, but the vendor that we selected has not fulfilled all the contractual obligations regarding the system's functionality. Um, the consortium, who is State College Borough, Ferguson Township, Patton Township, and Penn State University, has decided to move forward with replacing the system as it's not functioning the way we need it to function. The consortium is requesting that we do a request for proposal to acquire services and expertise of a consultant to help us write an RFP to find the proper records management sh, system that will do everything we needed to do as this consortium. Um, and attached to the agenda was, was the RFP that they're requesting, uh, the, or the memo, uh, in order to sign it, the MOU.
Thank you so much, uh, this is a public hearing, so I'll open it up to any comments from the public at this time. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and entertain the motion you find in your agenda.
This is Lisa, I'll move that the board of supervisors adopt the resolution of Ferguson Township, authorizing the township to enter memorandum of understanding with Patton Township and State College Borough and the Penn State University to acquire the services and expertise of a consultant to develop the request for proposal for a regional records management system.
This is Tiara, I second their motion.
Thank you, any comments, questions? I'll just say, good luck, um, best wishes on this, all right.
It's in the process.
Yeah.
I, I do have a question, do you know how long the proposal may take? How, is there a time limit, is it supposed to be done at a certain time, anything like that?
We, we don't, I mean, to be realistic, it's probably gonna be a, at least a two-year process to try and find the right, not, not the right company to help us find the system, but the right system for this consortium. Um, it's, it's been a bear to get this one to work, and it's probably gonna be a bear to get, get one that finds the right one. But we have never hired, in the history of the fifteen years I've been here, and prior to that, speaking to former chief Diane Conrad, we have never hired a consultant to tell us, hey, this is the type of system you're looking for, and the people that are bidding on it don't have that capability, you don't wanna pick them. So that's kind of where, where the consortium is going at this point. So hopefully, we can keep a system for another ten years then.
Okay, and I guess my second question then is, if during the two years, one of the townships, maybe let's just say Patton or, or the Borough decides to opt out, is, will this be brought to us in a different way, or, or will it just still stand, and will you all just go along with it?
So this MOU, this particular MOU is just to find the consultant. Once we have a consultant and go through a process, we'll probably have to enter into another MOU to keep the consortium together for that records management system. And if one of them drops out in the process, then depending on what the MOU would say, would be what, what that, what would be left over. In this current MOU, if somebody drops out for the consultant, they still owe the money.
Hmm, okay. Thank you, thank you so much, um, okay, we have a motion and a second, and this'll be a roll call vote.
This'll be resolution twenty, twenty-two dash fourteen, Ms. Strickland?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Caldwell?
Yes.
Ms. Donini?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Sergeant.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, next up is a proclamation to designate September as Suicide Awareness and Prevention Month. This is introduced by me. Um, provided with our agenda is a copy of a proclamation designating September as Suicide Awareness and Prevention Month, and September tenth as Suicide Awareness and Prevention Day in Ferguson Township. The proclamation has been adopted annually by the board and has been part of a countywide effort of the Center County Suicide Prevention Task Force. And Ms. Marisa Visari, Vichery, Visari, I think it is. I believe, is she here this evening up on the, I'm sorry, my, I can't see that far, Dave.
I do not see her.
Okay, okay.
James is moderating and saying no.
Okay, okay, thank you, I thought she might be. All right, um, uh, she's president of the Jane and Marie Foundation. Um, and, uh, I believe she may have had a schedule change, um, so won't be here to introduce the proclamation. Um, I would offer to any of the other supervisors, if you wanted to do that in her, in her, um, absence. Um, I do not have that in front of me, or I would, would you mind? Or all together. Thank you.
Uh, proclamation Suicide Awareness and Prevention Month, September twenty-twenty-two. Whereas suicide is the leading cause of all deaths in the United States. And whereas in Pennsylvania, one person dies by suicide every five hours, making it the third leading cause of death for ages ten to twenty-four, and the fourth leading cause of death for ages twenty-five to thirty-four. And whereas nearly five million people in the United States have lost a loved one to suicide. And whereas each member of our community is valued and irreplaceable. And whereas taking, oh, talking openly about stress and psychological health builds trust, reduces barriers to care, and enables early intervention. And whereas local and statewide suicide prevention efforts should be developed and encouraged to the maximum extent possible. And whereas most suicides are preventable, by learning the signs and symptoms to limit access to means, we can work together to help prevent suicide. Ooh, what just happened? Now therefore, hold on, wait, what just happened? Um, sorry. Thank you. Now therefore, the Ferguson Township Board of Supervisors do hereby designate the month of September twenty-twenty-two to be Ferguson Township Suicide Awareness and Prevention Month, and September tenth, twenty-twenty-two to be Ferguson Township Suicide Awareness and Prevention Day. Proclaim this, this fifth day of July, twenty-twenty-two, Ferguson Township Board of Supervisors.
Thank you so much for reading that, Tiara. Um, there is a recommended motion, you can find your, your agenda, and I'll entertain that at this point.
This is Hillary, I move that the board of supervisors adopt the proclamation.
This is Patty, I'll second.
Thank you, um, thank you very much, uh, to the Jane and Marie Foundation for all the work that they're doing, uh, in bringing this to us. Um, all right, uh, this'll just be a voice vote, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Next up is a proclamation to designate July as Park and Recreation Month. This will also be introduced by me. Um, since nineteen eighty-five, America celebrate, celebrated July as Park and Recreation Month, a program of the National Recreation and Park Association. The goal is to raise awareness of the vital impact that park and recreation have on communities across the United States. This July, Ferguson Township plans to release articles and short interview videos and invite residents to tag Ferguson Township on social media posts that promote local outdoor parks and encourage local outdoor opportunities for health, fitness, and recreational fund for residents of all ages and abilities. Issuing this proclamation will remind Ferguson Township residents of the importance of our parks, recreational facilities, and programs, while encouraging everyone to embrace active lifestyles and improve their overall health.
while encouraging everyone to embrace active lifestyles and improve their overall health throughout, through outdoor recreational fun. So, July is, um, Park and Recreation Month. So, all right. We, uh, do have a motion that you'll find in your agenda. Entertain that now.
This is Patty. I move that the Board of Supervisors adopt the proclamation designating July as Parks and Recreation Month.
Thanks. Do you have a second?
This is Lisa, I'll second.
Thank you very much. Any comments? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. And we are on to communications to the board. Anything anyone has to share? All right.
Um, I, I'm really bad with names, so you guys will have to forgive me, but, um, I believe his name is Rob Gilio, if I'm saying his name correctly. But he has been, especially just in line with Parks and Recreation Month. He wants to talk to the Board of Supervisors about having a, a fitness challenge with our township, possibly against other townships. And, um, they do this thing kind of like, you know, I don't know if you guys know about like catching Pokemon, where people used to do that. So there's a way that we can somewhat do that, but do things in Ferguson Township and little things like that. So I think it'd be really good for us to look into and possibly talk about. It gets people active. It gets, uh, the townships, you know, friendly competition and things like that. But I think, I think it's really cool, and we would be leading on it because he's come to us first. So, um, I'm going to send him your way, Centris's way, but I thought that it would be a good, you know, a good thing for us to look into.
Yeah, yeah, that sounds fun.
Yeah.
Um, any other communications to the board? Somebody contacted me a couple times about, um, considering, uh, banning, uh, gas-powered leaf blowers in the township. So I just wanted to let folks know. There's somebody thinking about that, yeah.
I'm glad you said that. I'm sorry, but it, this has nothing to do with what you said, but it just made me think of something else. Um, I did just spend the weekend in New York, and, um, when I went to the grocery store, there were no plastic bags, and I had to pay five cents for a brown bag, and there were no straws. And so I just wanna say, like, i- it's possible, like, and so if we wanna try to encourage our.
Whole states do it.
Right, whole states do it, right? So we wanna try to encourage. I think that's, I mean, I see a lot of people carry their own, um, personal bags anyway, but like with the whole straws thing. I just think that it's, it's, it's possible. Maybe it's something we look into more as a personal township, or we need to go further.
Yes.
Bring my visual aid. Tip, people carry their own bags.
Yes, people carry their own bags and their own straws and things like that. So, yeah, so I just wanted to put that out there, that.
Thank you.
When I saw that, I was like, wow, I felt so wasteful. When I came back home, you know, just
Yeah.
Looking at all the plastic bags I have under my sink and whatever, wherever you keep them at, right? So I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
And I think this is coming back up.
Yes.
Yes, we all have this prioritization task too, and I believe it's on there. Is it on there?
Yes.
Okay, 'cause it could be a write-in if it wasn't. So, yes, we're, thank you so much for bringing that. Yes, whole states do it, and we can too. Um, any other communications? Okay, then we're on to calendar items. Um, we have a lot of our, our usual, uh, meetings up there, and we see that Route Forty-five getaway starts July thirtieth, so that's coming up. We've got a neighborhood event, August third, in Greenbrier Sabrock Park. Um, and don't forget, the Pine Grove Mills Farmers Market is every Thursday, three to seven, at Pi- in Pine Grove Mills at St. Paul Lutheran. Um, also, we have a coffee and conversation, July. Yes, we have a coffee and conversation with staff, July fifteenth, at the Naked Egg. Um, just mentioning it's with staff there, just wanna make sure that, uh, I didn't really realize this. I should have, but I didn't, it was, Centris really helped me clearly understand, if we as supervisors want to go to coffee and conversation, um, we have to be really careful about not having a quorum there. So like, that had not occurred to me, and I, it then kind of notched into place why previous managers would go, well, if you really wanna come, you can come, but let me know. So, um, it's typically with staff. Uh, so if board members do want to attend, I would say definitely give the manager a heads up, just so she doesn't have to ask one of us to leave.
Oh, I was just about to ask, like, if everyone shows up, does, does it then have to be recorded?
Well, it's sort of like we've already then violated sunshine, because it would've had to been previously advertised. So typically, the best move would be for one of us to leave. So just to, you know, stay out of that kind of a situation.
Are you advertising this now? I'm just wondering. I'm not asking.
We don't advertise it because it's always been a staff function, and they don't need to be advertised. But if board members wanted to go and it resulted in a quorum, then that would be hot water.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Got it, no problem.
We'd have to take another path, so, all right.
And that's only, I'm sorry, that's only applicable when it's an event that the township has, because I just asked that just because we were, we just saw the president, but there were a lot of, you know, there were, but all of us were there, right?
There are rare kinds of exceptions, but even that, um, it's, uh, you wouldn't wanna have a discussion about township business while you were there.
Right.
And there's a lot in the law that has to do with like an appearance of, so, like, even though at that event, we were all together, because there's so many other people there, and you're sort of mingling, if, we wouldn't wanna say, I'll just go to a bar for a drink after this meeting or anything like that. Or not, maybe a bar, or a picnic. We wouldn't wanna all just go to a picnic together, or something like that. Um, we just have to be careful about it. And because coffee and conversation, typically it is about township business, 'cause residents are asking about various things. It just really lends itself to that, so, all right. Sure, all right, with that.
Motion to adjourn?
All right, we're adjourned. Thank you. Never gets to find that.
Yeah, gavel action, yeah.
Do you, do you have one at home?
I do have one at home.
Do you practice in front of the mirror?
I don't.